I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, March the 12th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all in attendance and those of y'all who may be watching. I'd like to, at this time, welcome up Dr. Matt Richardson, our Public Health Director. He is going to lead us in vacations and our pledges will be followed by Zach Davis, our Agriculture Extension Agent from... If you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones if you got them with you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's pray this morning. Our Father, we come to you with so many thoughts and feelings about a renewal. Father, we, we thank you for the coming of spring. Father, it's just a blessing that we mark every year after a cold winter, after hardships, after losses. Father, we see the renewal of life. We know that's a reminder from you, God, and we appreciate it. We thank you for the green grass and the budding trees, the nicer weather, Father, the sunshine, all of these things. Father, they, they bring pleasure and we thank you for that. God, we ask this morning that you be with those who are sick, those who are struggling. God, we, we all go through seasons and so we ask you give an extra measure of strength. As these people in this audience are thinking of people, thinking of family members, friends, relatives, who are struggling, God, we bring those names to you. We just, we bring them to you. We ask that you give an extra measure of perseverance, Father, because that can be hard to find when you suffer. Father, this morning, we thank you for so much that we enjoy the, again, these gifts you give of freedom, of liberty. And Father, we just ask that when we fail you, you give us the strength to get back up and to represent what your son represented, which is mercy and grace and peace. Father, for many of us, that's hard to find and hard to model. And so we ask for an extra measure of your mercy so that we can give it to others. Father, we thank you for things that go unnamed this morning. Our health, the fact that we can be here, live here, worship here, play here. Father, we thank you for this county, its leaders. But most of all, Father, we thank you that we live under an umbrella of grace provided by your son, Jesus Christ. And through his name, this morning, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you both. All right. Let's go to item one. For items not listed on the agenda, and our first speaker today is Jane Schultz. Good morning. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I'd just like to let the public know that our public comment forums are, speakers are limited to three minutes. So I'll call it set a timer, okay?
Yes. I've timed myself.
Perfect. Oh, good.
Okay.
All right. You look prepared.
I am prepared.
All right, let's do it.
Okay. My name is Jane Schultz. I'm a registered voter in Denton County and I live at Robeson Ranch. I serve as a voter registrar and election worker. Now, I've come to know, in the time that I've lived here, that we are blessed with a very secure voting system. Yet on every election day, thousands of legally registered voters in our county lose their right to vote because we don't have voting centers. Now, many more of them spend time desperately fine, trying to find the polling place where they're supposed to go. They are going to or from work, they're taking their kids to school or picking them up, they're running errands. They're doing the things that busy people do every day. I'm sure you do them. They are Republicans, they are Democrats, they are independent voters. And on March 5th, I saw this happen in real time, big time. I was an election clerk at the precinct at Denton North Branch Library. For every voter who cast a ballot in that precinct on primary election day, we turned away two legally registered voters. Some were sent to precincts as far away as Sanger, Crum, and Aubrey. Okay? Now, these wrong precinct voters came from both parties, although there were a lot more Republicans that got turned away. I'd say it was two Republicans that were turned away for every Democrat. By the end of the day, the election workers there estimated that we turned away, I would say, 400 Republican voters. Okay? Now, those are your voters, folks. Quite a few of these people came from another wrong polling precinct before they reached us, and several had been sent to two wrong precincts before they reached us. These people included a man in a wheelchair with an oxygen tank strapped on the back, who had a cannula up his nose. He had to be hydraulically lifted out of his vehicle and back into it when we told him, "Go someplace else." They included two people on walkers who struggled to stay upright as they came in and we told them, "Sorry, you can't vote here." And they included a woman so disabled she could not get out of her car. And we had to go help her in her car and then say, "Sorry, you're in the wrong place. Go someplace else." Now, I could not say to them on election day what I am going to say to you now. This is crazy and this is cruel. Ninety-three other counties in Texas value their voters enough to allow them to vote at any polling place on election day, and you know that.
Jane, go ahead and finish up your thoughts. Your time is up. Go ahead and finish your thought.
Okay. Now, this is really confusing to people who move here from neighboring counties. I have been told that the reason for this problem is that the parties cannot agree, but we all know that this is not quite true. The political party that you represent is the one that is blocking this action that would benefit every single one of 634,000 registered voters in this county. You are the leaders of that party in Denton County, but the voters of all political persuasions here depend on you to protect their interests. So I ask you, please do that soon so that all registered voters in our county will be able to find a polling place on election day on their first try. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Second person is only if needed. Our third registered speaker is Chelsea Stallings.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Judge Eads.
Good morning.
My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, 76201. And I'm going to keep mine short and sweet this morning. Mr. Hudspeth, as you can see, is not here. He's under the weather, but he's hoping to be back next week. We, in the meantime, we have discussed among ourselves, we have decided we're going to be going out to the St. John Cemetery this coming Saturday. It's a very informal cleanup day of service and we just wanted to extend that invitation to all Commissioners, to the entire Denton County community, Judge Eads, the Office of History and Culture, everyone in this audience today. I am actually, I just posted a link on the Facebook right now for this event. If anyone wants to check it out and keep, keep up with it. We are watching the weather and it does seem like there's a pretty solid chance it's going to be raining Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So probably by Friday, we'll be making the decision to postpone it until the next weekend. But as of this time, we're still planning for this coming Saturday. So we just would love to see everyone from the Denton County community come and help us just do a little bit of taking care of the final resting places of these freed people and formerly enslaved people up in Pilot Point. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Chelsea, and good luck on the weather.
Did you all get the lady to open the gate for you?
Mr. Hudspeth has been working on that and working, because he, he has the, the relationship with them. So yes, he has been.
At what time are you going to be there?
We're starting at 11:00. I'm hoping to be there by 10:30. But again, if it's, if it's looking like it's raining by Friday, I'm going to make the announcement on that event that it's going to be postponed to the following Saturday. If the grounds are wet, nobody wants to stomp around on that, so. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. See, no other individuals registered for item number one. Let's go to item number three. Oh, Holly, I left my red folder in there. Would you mind grabbing it? Let's go back to item two. We're waiting on that. Let's go to item two, two, which is our consent agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda or do we have a motion to accept it as presented?
Amen.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda, the A, consists of item two A, approval of order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budget. Memory request 100940 for the Public Health Department and Clinical Division to transfer $5,300 from vaccines to administrative equipment to fund a security camera system for the WIC office. And any appropriate action. Item two D is approval of payroll. Next, let's go to item four A, which is at 9:00 AM, a public hearing on March the 12th for approval of the cancellation of a portion of the Elk Farms Phase One plat, lots, lot 11. This is Block B and Lot One, Block C, located in Commissioner Precinct One. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. We are in the middle of our public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Elk Farms Phase One plat? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Elk Farms Phase One plat? Hearing none. Do we have a motion by Commissioner Williams to close a public hearing? Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your names.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval of the cancellation of a portion of the plat from Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next, let's go to four B. This is a public hearing on March the 12th, 2024, for the approval of the Business Park Edition replat. This is Lot 1R and 3R, Block A. This is 6.05 acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Business Park Edition replat? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Business Park Edition replat? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Do we have a motion for approval of the Business Park Edition replat? We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next, let's go to item three A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing March as Living Well Month and any appropriate action. We have our guests with us from our Denton County AgriLife and we'd love to welcome you all forward and make introductory comments as we read your proclamation. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Eads and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be present here to celebrate the month of March as Extension Living Well Month. Well, although every month is a Living Well Month in Extension, but our goal is to encourage lifelong health and well-being for every person, every family in our community. The Family and Community Health Unit of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension in Denton County offers basic nutrition education programs for adults and youth, chronic disease management programs, as well as physical activity programs. This month, I just wrapped up an eight-week fall prevention program. It's called A Matter of Balance at Thrive Louisville, and this has been one of the most popular programs. And since March of last year, we have conducted five workshops reaching almost 70 seniors in Denton County. We also conducted our first food preservation workshop this year in partnership with City of Denton's Environmental Services and Sustainability Department, and it was very well received. We had 20 participants walk out with research-based information on water bath canning, and they walked out with a blueberry spice jam to take home. We'll be offering more food preservation workshops pretty soon here. Dusty Five, our dedicated Better Living for Texans agent, has been engaging our residents with diverse range of enriching programs. She recently concluded Get the Fact Series at Little Elm Senior Center and Get a Taste for Reducing Food Waste, a new program at Louisville and Pilot Point Libraries. Participants delved into the intricacies of food waste, understanding its multifaceted impacts and discovering practical solutions, such as composting, to nurture their gardens and lawns. Likewise, she also started a Walk Across Texas Initiative with Ann Window School for the Young, where 300 students united in an eight-week journey towards fitness, exploring various forms of exercise under Dusty's guidance. Adding to this, she also launched the Growing and Nourishing Healthy Communities Garden Course at Little Elm Library, which drew an expanding crowd eager to cultivate their green thumbs. We are also grateful to all our Master Wellness volunteers. They have contributed over 120 hours in this past six months by assisting and delivering programs in our community. So thank you again on behalf of AgriLife team, and we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate everything that y'all do. I've got this proclamation. This is a core proclamation recognizing Extension Living Well Month, and whereas the health and well-being of the family are crucial to the functioning of the nation and to providing adults and youth the necessary skills and knowledge to help them achieve the best quality of life possible. Whereas physically, psychologically, socially, and emotionally strong families provide strength for future generations. And whereas Extension is a nationwide educational network through the land-grant universities, fully cooperating through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, state governments, and county governments. And whereas the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Denton County Initiatives in Nutrition, Healthy Lifestyles, Food Safety, Financial Management, Parenting, and Environmental Health enable citizens to gain knowledge and skills to lead full and productive lives. And whereas Extension offers educational workshops, seminars, publications, and websites to help families and individuals, farms, businesses, and communities. And whereas the designation of Extension Living Well Month is a fitting tribute to the National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Professionals and local staff who provide education critical to the quality of life of adults, youth, and families. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as Extension Living Well Month in Denton County, Texas, and encourage our residents to take advantage of the educational opportunities that Family and Consumer Sciences educators of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension offer in the community. Done in open court, this is the 12th day of March 2024, upon a motion made by, a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? I just want to thank, thank you so much for everything that you do. You bring such energy to the position. I remember when we first visited you, you came to the county a few years ago, and I just appreciate everything that y'all do across the county, not only in our rural areas, but in our urbanized areas as well, as you encourage everybody to live a healthy lifestyle. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. So thank you. Let's do a picture real quick. All right. Let's go to approval of the item five A is approval of the bill report. Payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, shared forfeiture, VIT interest in DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Matt, good morning.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next, let's go to item five B, approval of Denton County's 2024 expenditure statement of unreimbursed healthcare expenditures for participation in the State Tobacco Settlement Distribution Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item five C, acceptance and approval of the county investment report for the quarter ending December 31st, 2023, for fiscal year 2024. Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Jeff, did you have anything you'd like to say? You want to go over?
I just would like to tell you the size of our portfolio is 796 million, so we have a lot of money invested. A lot of that is, in fact, our biggest interest-earning fund this last quarter was ARPA, not the general fund as it normally is, or other capital project funds. But last year, we finished the year with a record interest earnings of over $33 million across all funds. And about, let's see, 6.9 million of that was in the general fund, so that shows you how it's all spread out. And I do expect interest earnings. The Fed did not lower rates as expected the last time they met. So I'm kind of expecting rates to kind of stable out this year. They were expected to drop a little bit, but that's how it looks right now. So through the end of this fiscal year, I kind of expect it to, the rates to remain about where they are, which is both good and bad news for the county. Do you have any questions for me?
Members, any questions for Jeff?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item five D, discussion and consideration of issuing the TRIP 22 funds to fund this. You know, we will hold this. John Polster will be here momentarily, so we're going to go hold that. We'll just proceed forward to item six A is approval of the purchase of computers, laptops, notebooks, and related computer equipment for the county's fiscal year 2024 hardware refresh project from Dell Marketing LP in amount of $858,028 through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIRTSO 3763. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item six B, approval of renewal of RFP 202577. This is a tax statement preparation and mailing services to data integrators incorporated. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item six C, approval of award of ITV 232794. This is Epilogue Fusion Pro 48 Laser Engraver to Engraving Concepts LP. Any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item six D, approval of award of RFP 232783. This is Disaster Debris Removal Services to Cerus Environmental Services Incorporated as a primary, TFR Enterprises Incorporated as a secondary, and Looks Great Services as tertiary. And any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item seven A, approval of budget memory request 100950 for the Criminal District Attorney to transfer $1,575 from evidence expense to county-wide technology, technology software services to reimburse technology service for three computer software licenses. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Next is item seven B, approval of budget memory request 100960 Approval of budget amendment request one-zero-zero-nine-six-zero for the county jail to transfer four-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment in human resources overtime policy as recommended by the Budget Office for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the State Commission of Jail Standards in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So, next is item seven C. Approval of revisions to the Capital Improvement Committee and approval of the Capital Improvement Committee membership provisions to include the Budget Officer, the County Auditor Director of Purchasing, Chief Information Officer, Director of Facilities, Facility Division Manager of Construction, County Administrator, and two members of Commissioners Court, County Judge, and Commissioner Precinct Three, in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So, next is item eight A. Report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. We have one new hire in the two-hundred-eleven District Court, one demotion in the county clerk, one new hire in Justice of the Peace Number One, one new hire in Justice of the Peace Number Three, one new hire in juvenile probation, four new hires in the sheriff's office, three of those are detention officer one, one lateral transfer in the sheriff's office, two promotions in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this.
Thank you. Next is item eight B. Approval of deletion of vacant buyer position. This is slot ten dash PU Pay Grade Nine and the creation of procurement project manager slot zero-two PU Pay Grade thirteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So, next is item eight C. This is the approval of the creation of three ARPA-funded ERP administrator slots. This is a pay grade fifteen and the Application Development and Support Department. And we do have several of our departments here. I don't know if they wanted to speak about that, or did we want to?
Yes, I'd like to hear some more information about the judge.
Okay, I believe I saw Kevin here. Perfect. Good morning.
Are these permanent positions? One thing I need to ask.
Yeah, the committee is recommending approving them as permanent positions.
But we won't have ARPA funds forever.
Correct.
So, my question is, why do we need to have permanent positions for that?
Well, it'd be a lot more challenging to hire people if they knew their job was only short-term, especially for a position like this. Obviously, through attrition and through the budget process, Commissioners Court can reevaluate the need for the positions in future years.
But I would like for them to know that the position's not permanent going in. I'm just having some problems with hiring people for money that's not going to be forever.
Right.
That's just my opinion. I don't know how the court members feel.
Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, may I?
Yes, please, of course.
You and I spoke over the weekend because I had some questions about this entire thing. And if I remember correctly, we're replacing a forty-year-old system and a twenty-year-old system with one new system.
Correct.
And it sounds like it's about time. But my concern is that even though these may be useful people as we're going through a transition, which may take two years, that there's going to be additional need for people who can help maintain and respond to users, et cetera. So, I have no problem, Commissioner Mitchell, in having these as permanent positions. As you've mentioned, there'll be some attrition, and there'll be the opportunity for us to downgrade or even eliminate in future budget years.
Correct. That's correct. You know, based on a project this size and others that the county and others have worked on like this in the past, it can take five to ten years before, you know, the system is fully matured and, you know, we implement all the features and functionality that the county wants to use. You know, we address any gaps in the systems and the reporting. So, you know, definitely the implementation will happen much quicker than that, but it takes a lot more time to perfect the system to meet our needs.
When do you plan to start your implementation?
Well, the implementation is going to be ongoing. I guess today we have on the agenda for approving the contract, so, you know, the configuration and training would begin immediately, and then implementation will need to be complete before December 2026.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Commissioner Mitchell, to address your concern, I hear what you're saying about that. I think part of what we're looking at is to onboard these people so they could help with the, to get it fully functional, as Kevin was saying, have them dedicated to that. And the funding, the ARPA funding, would just be used as a, I think, as a temporary offset to that expense which we would be paying for out of the general fund anyway. And so, I think that was just a temporary savings out of the general fund. And as is explained to me by members of this project committee, that this would help to customize reports and other things as we, to bill those as we go forward. But I think we should always be looking for the justification of those jobs as they move forward, as we would any of them.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with hiring them part-time, but I do have a problem with hiring full-time employees for short-term money, part-time money, and then the general fund will have to pick it up. I do have a problem with that.
It's, so it's four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars impact per year. Am I correct?
Yeah, for fiscal year 2028, that's the estimated amount.
It is a lot of money.
It's an old system, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, no. The system, I realize, and so, when we approve the system, was the ongoing, this was part of that, or no? I mean, that needs to be when we're approving implementation of systems. If it increases our staffing, we need to be approved, or we need to be thinking about that, certainly.
Right, yeah. That's what's on the agenda today, to approve the contract for implementation.
But wasn't, was there a committee on this, Judge? Or no?
Yes, there was. There was a committee. Ms. Brown was on the committee. Kevin was on the committee. Scott was on the committee.
No, I think what you're trying to communicate is that anytime we have something like this, it's going to be obviously large.
Right.
At the moment, we start having these discussions and the committees formed, we should be looking and discussing also the amount of employees that are going to be added to not only implement, but to probably continue the process going forward, and why, right? So, we can all look and go, okay, the implementation, the purchase price, implementation price, and then the ongoing cost, which obviously there are going to be all kinds of ongoing costs with the system itself, but then you have personnel that would be an ongoing cost as well. And obviously, that's something that would or should, and I'm not saying it was, and I don't know, was discussed during the very initial onset of this and understanding what we're trying to accomplish, so.
Because, as you know, many times when you're implementing technology, it's to make us more efficient, right? And so, and I realize ERP is a massive thing, but I'm just saying, those are the things. Sometimes you actually are showing a benefit that, hey, we may not have to hire as many new people or whatever. It sounds like this one's the other way around.
Not necessarily. I mean, I think the county's going to realize a lot of efficiencies with a system like this. If you think about when the county purchased its existing financial system, I don't know the exact year, but it was sometime in the eighties. Denton County was much smaller. You know, it was a much less complex organization than it is today. So, we've really, I think, gotten a ton of value out of that old system, but we've implemented a lot of workarounds to, you know, to make it work for us. Some of the workarounds aren't ideal or the most efficient way of doing things. So, with a modern system like the committee's recommending to purchase today, there will be a lot of efficiencies and a lot of new things the county can do to better manage itself as an organization than we've ever been able to do before.
And have those efficiencies been calculated? I mean, I know it's estimates.
Right. I don't believe, I don't believe they've been estimated.
Kevin, I believe you told me that the support for either of these two systems is going away, so that we have to do something. We can't be without either of these systems. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The financial system, I think I was, we originally were told that it was going to be discontinued in 2023. Is that right? So, we are getting some minimal support on the system right now, although there's no update. For the human resource system, that is being discontinued this month, and they're offering zero support after that. There's a lot of risk associated with, like, open enrollment coming up later this year, because that's always a real challenging process.
Yeah, so I'm going to just make a little comment here. So, HR Kronos is the latest system that we implemented in the technology side. But they, we implemented this in 2016. Eight years later, the company is saying, we don't support this system anymore. Then you have the financial management system, forty-year-old system. When we implemented Kronos HR, I mean, we saw the need to get a person dedicated to HR functions from the Kronos company. What we are trying to do here is you are going to have financial, you are going to have accounting, you are going to have technology, you are going to have payroll, purchasing, budgeting, all in one system. And that is the need for the three people that we are requesting today.
And my problem is, my problem is not the adding the people. My problem is that we're using ARPA funds to hire full-time people when the ARPA funds is going to run out. If you're going to justify these people, then justify them in the general budget rather than saying, we're going to use ARPA funds, and then when ARPA funds run out, oh, we're going to jump over to the general fund. So, I'm saying if there, if you need those people, justify the people just like we do in any other employees. You know, I, I don't like hiring employees for a certain thing, full-time employees for a certain job, and then all of a sudden, when that job is, that job is done, oh, I think we'll add them into our employee count if it's important enough to add those three employees justified in the general fund.
I understand. Yeah, so we...
Go ahead.
Sorry, Judge. I was going to say, in the past, the county auditor's office had... The county auditor's office had a position that was full-time supporting the financial management system. I don't, I don't believe that position exists anymore because, you know, over time, the system matured enough and it stopped growing like it had been. And then, like Mr. Hernandez said, you know, they had the same thing for the Kronos system. This really isn't anything new for the county. So, these are positions that would be needed regardless of whether ARPA existed.
And you're missing the point, Kevin. I'm not having a problem with hiring people that are needed. I'm having a problem that you're saying you're using ARPA funds to get these people, and when the ARPA funds is out, run out, what are you going to do? Are they justified to keep working or not? That's the problem I'm having.
Right. So, if you don't mind, Judge, so I obviously understand where Commissioner Mitchell's coming from. None of us want what we, surprise, right? I think that what, I think the way you have to look at this is, this is just an avenue that we're utilizing the funds during this time.
Yeah.
Because those ARPA funds are going to be, they have a time limit, and if we don't utilize those funds, then they go back to the government, which we don't want going back to current government. So, this is, the way I'm having to look at it is, we need these three people. We're going to hire them no matter what. We're going to utilize the ARPA funds that are available because we have quite a bit here with the county, and we're going to, we're going to be able to use those funds instead of using it out of our general fund. And then, obviously, once that ends, which is within two years, 2026, we don't have a choice. We have to have spent that money, or it goes back. Then we'll have to roll them into, obviously, being paid for out of our general fund. So, that's the way I have to look at it, and I'm assuming that's probably what we are attempting to do here. But, you know, like Commissioner, for me, at the end of the day, I would prefer of us to have had this conversation early on to have, be aware of the, hey, look, we're going to need to hire these three people to continue this program, and here's why, and here's what it's going to amount to. Unfortunately, I went through a very similar computer system upgrade, a whole system, and I ended up having to dedicate two people that the company that sold me on it didn't advise me that I would need that, and basically, I had to dedicate two people to it as well. So, I can appreciate where we're coming from. It's just the, for some of us, we don't like the surprises. And I don't want to call it a surprise, but you know what I mean?
Right.
But, yeah, I think the funding is just being utilized that way. I don't know if it's necessarily, it's not a, well, once the funds are out, we would get rid of them anyway. It's a, it's a long-term commitment. It's just where does the funds come from? And right now, we're going to utilize the funds that are available until they run out in 2026 anyway.
And, you know, this is not a new thing for me, Kevin, and you know that.
I understand. Yes, ma'am.
You know, you always need to justify when you bring something to court. For me, I don't know about everybody else, but that's, you know. And I'm not in favor of hiring employees and not having a long-time funding stream for them because ARPA funds, every time we turn around and say, let's use the ARPA funds, what happens when the ARPA funds are gone? And that's not just you.
Right.
Okay. That's, that's everybody. So, we need to have a plan after they're gone. And we know, we're going, we know that we're going to need these employees after the ARPA funds have run out. Have we talked about that? That's where I'm going with it.
Okay.
Yeah, and because I agree with everything that's being said. It's just, certainly, one-time funds are, we need to look critically at all of the expenditure we're doing. But when you talk about recurring obligations, that's where it gets really, for me, very, very, something we need to be really analyzing, subscriptions and people, right? Because we are, we're going to be obligated to that, and those are, those end up being a lot of money when you put it out over a course of forever, so.
I understand. Salaries are very, very expensive, a big part of the county budget.
But they never do mean.
Any, any, any further comments? Is there a desire to move forward?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Four in favor, one opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go. We'll have John come forward. Let's go to item five D, which is discussion and consideration issuing TRIP twenty-two funds to fund the second issuance listed projects and the possibility of issuing additional funds for reimbursing the general fund all or part of funds used in pre-funding road projects totaling fifty-four million. Good morning, John.
You should have received in your packet the spreadsheet showing the suggested projects that I gleaned from working with the members of the court on those projects that they want to move forward on and those projects that are able to be moved forward on in second issuance. I also made a reference to including additional funds to be issued in the county roadside. And then, in my email, I referenced that the bond program, early on, before it passed, borrowed fifty-four million dollars from fund balance. And part of the bond program is to reimburse part of that fifty-four million over time as we issue the debt. So, the list of projects that I've got total right around fifty million dollars, and I think the agenda placement reference is fifty-four. If you want to issue anything above that, what's on the spreadsheet for reimbursement of the fund balance. As far as I know, I got y'all's list accurate. If I didn't, speak now and forever hold your peace.
Or until the next issuance.
Yeah, that's right.
At least. I can't turn that sheet around.
I'm good.
Ma'am, did you, did y'all want to, did y'all need to look at that? Did you look at, look at your sheet again?
It hasn't changed since I sent it. And Commissioner, I got Copper Canyon in there. That's what you're looking for. The six-ten or the nine, nine-twenty-five. I'll have to use my glasses to tell you exactly.
All right, the chair move for approval?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
I was going to tell you the number.
I can't see this this morning. I can't read it this morning.
All right, I will hold the vote.
No, I've looked, no, no, I'm good. I've looked at it. Yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
950.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Let's go to item 10A's approval of the preliminary acceptance of Hilltop Road Reconstruction Project. This is a Commissioner Precinct 4.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The chair was second. Diane, that road turned out really nice, was just on it the other day.
It looks nice.
All right.
Still have luck trees.
Yes, yes, we kept the trees. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12A, approval of the 2024-2025 inter-local agreements for shared governance, communications, and dispatch services system between Denton County, Texas and the Crum ISD Police Department, the Crum, City of Crum Police and Fire Departments, and the North Central Texas College Police Department. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funded request to fulfill allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 13B, approval of the request to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor in amount of $88,889 in any appropriate action.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13C, approval of continuing education hours for the 2023 for Commissioner Ryan Williams as required by the Article 81.0025 of the Texas Local Government Code and any appropriate action.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations, John.
Motion carries unanimously. Yes, continuing ad. Next is item 14A, approval of the master service agreement between Denton County, Texas and Cognizant Worldwide Limited. Approval of the statement of work for workday development services between Denton County, Texas and Collaborative Solutions LLC and affiliate of Cognizant Worldwide Limited in amount of $3,285,192, with funding to come from order line item 5466611086 Technology Software Services ERP Implementation. Approval of the statement of work for workday lean-on services support between Denton County, Texas and Collaborative Solutions LLC and affiliate of Cognizant Worldwide Limited in amount of $46,700, with funding to come from order line item 546661611086 Technology Software Services ERP Implementation Service. Did anyone want to speak to this item? It's $3 million.
All move approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of addendum number two to the master agreement for, we're going to hold this for a week till Peggy Riddle can come back. Next is item 14C, approval of the agreement for professional services between Denton County, Texas and 3-1 Company for cash vest liquidity and treasury analysis services in the not-to-exceed amount of $99,000 and exemption of said agreement from the requirements of Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.023 under 262.024, for personal and professional services, with funding for the agreement to come from order line item 0153551040, consultant fees as requested and recommended by the Denton County Treasurer and Denton County Auditor.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14D, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Corrent, Texas, in amount of $258,383.91, and the town of Hickory Creek, Texas, in amount of $53,825.22, and the town of Shady Shores, Texas, in amount of $31,540.89 for the purpose of allowing Denton County to, two connection points for dark fiber connectivity for a total of $343,750.2, order line item 5468991067, pass-through to cities with funding to come from American Rescue Plan, category 7.2, transfers to other units of government as recommended by Eric Geldersley, project administrator, county administration, as authorized by Chapter 791 of the Texas Government Code.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that. That's going to be a lot of help for those cities.
Yes.
Absolutely. Next is item 14E, approval of the main subscription agreement between Denton County, Texas and Workday Incorporated, which includes order form 00436551 in the amount of $8,298,44, work order 00440766 in the amount of $220,550, and work order 436563 in the amount of $49,000 for a total of $8,479,424, with funding in the first year in the amount of $505,796 to come from American Rescue Plan Act funds, order line item 5466611086 Technology Software Service ERP Implementation Services.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to, did we get everything? I think we did. Yeah, 14B. We're going to hold that one. We're going to, it's going to be reposted for next, for next week. All right, let's go to item 17 for community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct 1.
Thank you, Judge. I've just got one item coming out of Frisco. Central Park will now be known as Kathy C. Park, a former council member and mayor. During her time with the city, C contributed to multiple large-scale city projects, including the Stonebauer Center, Ryder Field, bring, she was helped, she helped bring the Frisco Rough Riders and then the Commerce Center. The IDEV, the Sports City USA started in council work session under Kathy C.'s term. So I wanted to say congratulations to her. And that's all I've got, Judge.
Perfect, good. Thank you. Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you, Judge. So there's a few events in the next week or so. Carrollton's got all-about-nature play at the Elm Fort Nature Center on the 14th, 21st, and 28th from 1:00 to 5:00, and then pause to read. So kids are going to be invited to read to Hersi the Therapy Dog at the Carrollton Library at Hebron and Josie. That is the 17th from 1:00 to 2:30. And let's see, we have in Frisco, the Aqua Egg Hunt. Easter's coming up. It's the 16th from 9:00 to 11:40 at the Frisco Athletic Center. And in the colony, we continue to have the tax preparation help at the, at the library. That's all I have.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
We have the annual father-daughter prom, which is March 16th, 6:00 p.m., 9:00 p.m. We have a twin in Flower Mound. We have a twin co-park open house on March 16th, Twin Co. Park in Flower Mound. We have several Easter egg hunts that I'll announce next week. Vito income tax preparation is still ongoing at the Louisville Library. We have a breakfast with the Easter Bunny on March 16th at the Valley Parkway Thrive in Louisville, and St. Patty's Texas style, March 16th at Wayne Ferguson Plaza in Louisville. Neighborhood Grant Workshop on March 19, 6:30 to 7:30. Free information session for Louisville residents to learn about grant offerings such as the Property Enhancement Program. That's going to be 6:30 to 7:30 in Louisville.
Commissioner Edmondson?
Thank you, Judge. First of all, let me congratulate all the winners in our recent election. And for those of you who don't know, we're not done. There are a couple of runoffs yet in Denton County. So you'll be seeing more of those flyers coming and more of those campaign signs out. In Argyle, we're going to have a St. Patty's Day Golden Ager Shamrock Bingo, and that's on the 14th. You do need to make reservations. So if you need to know how to reach them, get in touch with me, and I'll let you know. We also have some things that I'll be announcing next week. In Denton, we've got a golf scramble going on, and it's going to be out at Robes and Ranch, and they're going to have lunch, et cetera, out there. It'll be a lot of fun. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the Robes and Ranch course, I'm told it's a very, very nice course. I don't play golf, but I see a lot of people out there all the time. They're going to have a night hike in Denton at Clear Creek Natural Heritage Center, and that's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 on March 22nd. We're going to have a Great American Cleanup on March 23rd. And as you all probably know, we are celebrating Women's History Month this month, and yesterday was National Women's Day. We'll have more about that in the newsletter that I'm putting out. Everybody's having an Easter egg hunt. If you don't have one at your house, there are plenty of them all over the county, so be sure to take a look. I know you can find one that your children will enjoy, and maybe you'll enjoy it, too. Commissioner Mitchell has announced most of the Flower Mound things that are going on. And then in Haslam is an Easter egg hunt. This is, this is a kind of a far-flung part of Denton County, but we're so glad to know what they're doing over there, along with New Fairview, another Easter egg hunt. So if you all want to have your own planned, there's plenty to choose from. Thank you in advance. I'd just like to wish everybody a very happy and blessed Easter.
Absolutely.